Thanks for everybody coming this evening, for your interest in the county government. Tonight, we're going to have our public hearing on our proposed tax levies and reassessments. So if you haven't signed up to speak, sign up sheet in the back and the clerk, Madam Clerk has the sign up sheet over here, if you see her on that. So we'll start tonight, opening our meeting by an invocation by Supervisor Dan Quinn, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Supervisor Mike Carter. Let's all stand, please. If you haven't done so, please silence your phones. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect us and all those around us, and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Okay, now we'll proceed with our public hearing on the proposed tax levies. Once we conclude that hearing, we will move on to the public hearing on the real estate reassessment. Okay, our public hearing tonight, I'll read these out. In accordance with section 15.2-1427 and 15.2-2507, Code of Virginia, as amended, notice is hereby given that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will conduct their public hearing on Monday, April the 8th, at approximately 6:00 in the Board Supervisors' boardroom at the Governor's Senate, located at 1255 Franklin Street, Suite 104, Rocky Mount. Hearing to set the tax levies for the following classes of property. Setting a tax levy of $45 per 100 of assessed value on real estate, public service, corporation property, and the mobile homes pursuant to the authority of 58.13200, 58.13201, 58.13202, 58.13203, 58.13204, 58.13205, Code of Virginia as amended. Setting the tax levy of $2.41 per 100 of assessed value on personal property pursuant to the same authority of the laws that I just read a second ago. Setting a tax levy of $1.89 per 100 of assessed value on personal property classified as heavy construction machinery, including but not limited to land movers, bulldozers, front end loaders, graders, packers, graders, packers, power shovels, cranes, pile drivers, forest harvesting, civil culture activity equipment, ditch, and other types of diggers owned by business pursuant to the authority of 58.13508.2, Code of Virginia. Setting a tax levy of 70 cents per 100 assessed value on machinery and tools based on original cost and decline in depreciation over a seven-year period. By the seventh year of depreciation, the effective rate is 28 cents per 100 assessed value. This rate is levy pursuant to the authority of 58.13507B of the Code of Virginia. And setting a tax levy of $1.08 per 100 of assessed value on merchants' capital pursuant to the authority of 58.13509, 58.13510, Code of Virginia. All right, if there's anyone here wishing to speak regarding these levies, this is not a closed meeting. It will be closed after the hearing and moved on to public comment for real estate assessment and proposed tax increases. When the clerk calls your name, you come forward. You'll be given three minutes. At that time, the mic will be cut off, you'll be asked to stop, and I want to give everybody an opportunity to talk. Madam Clerk, if you'll call a first name.
Carlton Butler.
Carlton Butler, 15 Key Lake Woods Circle, Manita.
Mr. Butler, if you will, please speak into that mic.
Carlton Butler, 15 Key Lake Woods Circle, Manita, Virginia.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to thank each of you for the opportunity to share the thoughts of your taxpayers. We respectfully ask that the supervisors consider the following information and input prior to setting the rates. State of our economy is we're in $34 trillion of debt, the worst inflation in 40 years, bankruptcies are up 13 percent, highest interest rates in 34 years, credit card debts at a historic $5 trillion, with credit card default up eight and a half percent. Housing's up 29 percent, rent's up 18 percent, groceries up 25 percent, fuel up 49 percent, electricity up 14 percent since 2021 with a 5.1 increase projected for 2025. Vehicle repossessions are up 20 percent. Wages in Franklin County have not kept up with inflation. The unemployment's 2.7, which is low, however, the poverty rate's 13.3 percent, a percent higher than the state and the national levels. One in 7,000 homes in Virginia is foreclosed, with 120 in Franklin County this year. Residents have had to make hard decisions to cut spending on groceries, cancel subscriptions, combine fuel trips to conserve fuel, no vacations, reduce doctor visits and medications, seek assistance from churches and charities to pay the rent, electric bills, buy clothing and food. They've had to utilize their savings to pay bills, utilize their credit cards to pay bills. They've fallen behind on their rent, house payments, and vehicle loans. They're subject to foreclosures, vehicle repossession, and credit card default. Your current proposed tax increase is about $8 million this year. We ask that you reduce this increase from $8 million to $4 million. We understand that while this will be difficult, but these are the hard choices that we have to make. We ask that you operate as the residents have to. We operate as if you can't increase your income. We, as Americans, have to make hard choices. We ask the supervisors to remember that middle and low-income families bear the burden of tax, rising taxes. Finally, we must change direction from tax and spend. The time has come to change with the times. We can't continue to do things the way we always have and expect a different result. This starts at a local level. We need to cut services and taxes to get debt under control this year alone. The Franklin County Debt Service in your budget's $5 million for this year alone. No more borrowing money. If we can't afford to pay for it, we don't need it. And finally, we need to remember that we're mortgaging our children and grandchildren's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Lynn and Sharon Cogno.
Yeah, I'm Lynn Wajnoh with Chestnut Forest Drive in Hardy, Virginia. The things that that gentleman just discussed are basically on the same page that we're on. If you raise taxes, you're going to create hardships on many of the people that we've spoken to in Franklin County that say they have to limit the amount of food that they buy. So we'd like you to keep the rate to 31 cents per 100 or as low as possible.
Ourselves, we only live on one-
State your name and address.
I'm sorry. Sharon Wajnoh, Chestnut Forest Drive, Hardy.
Yes, ma'am.
Ourselves, we live on social security. We only make, as a couple, $1,724 a month. We don't have Medicare because we can't afford it. We don't have house insurance because we can't afford it. Our money is spent mainly on food, and we also qualify for going to Agape's to get free things like clothes. Raising the taxes is going to be a hardship. We already have to do a part-time job once a week, and our ages are 74 and going to be 76. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Ron Shiflett. Live at 805 Patah Road in Sontag. At this time, I know I'm being timed. It appears that the goal of the supervisors and the county administration is to arrive at a single tax rate that assures an equal increase in a tax bill for this year versus last year, or fiscal '24-'25 versus fiscal '23-'24. That's a worthy goal. I applaud you for your goal, but it's very difficult, if not impossible, to achieve. The various mixes of land use that are contained within each landowner's land holdings makes it about impossible to achieve that goal. The only way it can be achieved is to apply different tax rates for each different land use that's contained within a landowner's land holdings. It's not impossible to do, but certainly would be impossible to do in the next few weeks. It would require the development of an algorithm that would have to be applied to each landowner's land holdings within, or land uses within his land holdings, because that's the way the reassessments are constructed. I suggest that the board choose a single percentage to be applied to last year's tax bill to arrive at this year's tax bill. This would give you the equity that you're trying to achieve for this year and gives you time to achieve the revenue-neutral goal that you really want, and I think is a worthy goal, but it's going to take time to bring it about. That percentage that I'm talking about being applied to last year's tax bill to reach this year's tax bill, I suggest to be 1.5 percent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Smith.
I'm Michael Smith, a fourth-year taxpaying resident of Wurts, here in Franklin County, Virginia. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for this opportunity to address the proposed real estate tax levy of $0.45 per $100 valuation for the upcoming year. In calendar year 2022, our county moved to a twice-per-year real estate tax collection resulting in a one-time $20 million tax revenue windfall. That's from our capital planning update. We have an additional $1 million in the Revenue Budget Stabilization Reserve Fund. We also have $5.7 million in the Debt Service Reserve Fund. To summarize just those, the tax windfall, the budget stabilization, and the debt service have a total of $26.75 million in them. Additionally, there's $39.8 million that is set aside in our Capital Reserve Fund. That's, again, from the capital planning update at the end of last year. As a result of the tax surplus over the previous four years, this is well above our county policy of maintaining not less than 20 percent of our general fund operating revenues that we set as sort of a baseline, and that's from our capital planning update. That was page five. I understand the importance of unassigned funds in our budget to minimize borrowing as a buffer to capital projects and to maintain our standing with rating agencies and to earn spendable interest. At the close of 2023, we had a total of approximately $66.5 million in reserve, so that even at a level budget, we would continue to grow our cash reserves, allowing our capital projects to move forward at a fiscally responsible pace. With continued financial assault from all directions on us, from food, from fuel, and from utilities, it's unnecessary to request and obtain any increase that would place increased burdens on the taxpayers of our county. Even without the proposed tax increase, our reserves are increasing. We would ask you to continue your excellent work at running our county business, but with a level budget. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bill Hinton, address 340 Harbor Crossing Drive. To the board, thank you for allowing me the chance to talk and voice my opinion as a concerned resident of Franklin County and the proposed real estate tax increase. As you know, state statute 58.1-3321 addresses the way tax increases are to be applied. There are several people in this county that aren't even aware of this state statute. I'd like to read this paragraph out of here that addresses what you all are held to. "When the annual assessment, biannual assessment, or general reassessment of real estate property by county, city, or town would result in an increase of 1 percent or more in the total real property tax levied, such county, city, or town shall reduce its levy, the rate of levy, for the forthcoming tax year, so as to cause such rate of levy to produce no more than a 101 percent of the previous year's real property tax levies." For example, the current rate is 61 cents. Property tax assessment on a home valued at $100,000 would produce a tax rate of $610 a year. An allowable rate increase of 1 percent by the state code would be $6. A 35 percent increase in the rate of assessment would bring that home value to $135,000. So therefore, individual's tax rate would increase by $207. That does not comply with the code. So therefore, you would have to lower the tax rate, in this example, down to approximately 45 cents, so that there is a revenue-neutral tax rate to the individual homeowner. But as assessments go up, which most have with this new rate, the rate would have to be adjusted approximately to 40.7 cents. More disturbing that I've seen is that there appears to be no standard for assessing homes, as homes' assessments differ dramatically between the homes that are of comparable value in the same neighborhood, let alone outside of the neighborhood and all. Same building material, everything, same-sized property lot. And as members of this committee, I would think at least one of you would ask the same questions. Why is there such a big difference in the home values, and how did you arrive at the numbers that you did? For example, in-
Thank you, sir.
That's three minutes?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak that did not sign up? All right, the notice, the County of Franklin County Public Notice, Notice of Proposed Real Estate Property Tax Increase. Pursuant to section 58.1-3321 Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, notice is hereby given that the County of Franklin proposes the real property tax levies. A real estate assessment increase. Total assessed value of real property excluding additional assessments due to new construction or improvements to property exceeds last year's total assessed value of real property by 46.80 percent. Lowered rate necessary to offset increased assessment, this is what the gentleman was talking about while ago. The tax rate, which would levy the same amount of real estate tax as last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of real estate with the exclusion of mentioned above, would be 41 cents per 100 of assessed value. This rate will be known as the lowered tax rate. That's what it was lowered down to, was the 41 percent, then the 4 percent proposed tax rate added to it. The effective rate increase, the County of Franklin proposed to adopt, tax rate of 45 cents per 100 of assessed value. The difference between the lowered tax rate and the proposed rate would be 4 cents per 100, or 9.76 percent. This difference will be known as the effective tax rate increase. Individual property taxes may, however, increase at a percentage greater than or less than the above percentage. Proposed total budget increase based on the proposed real property tax rate and the changes of the revenue, the total budget of the County of Franklin will be lowered than last year's by .31 percent. The provisions of this section shall not be applicable to the assessment of public service corporation property by the State Corporation Commission. All right, now, before we close the public comment, I want to ask again if there's anyone else. Even though you didn't sign up, that's cool. If you'd like to come forward, state your name and address for the record. Give you an opportunity to speak. Yes, sir. Please come forward.
My name's Greg Benda. I'm from 40 Baywatch Drive in Manita. Having a discussion with some of my neighbors today about this situation and whatnot. One of the comments that wanted to just bring up, which I'm sure you're well aware of, as mentioned by this gentleman before, that the taxes were once collected once a year and now they're biannually collected. The curiosity is, is we hope you're fiscally responsible enough to take the money that you get six months earlier and invest it, and the interest off that money has to be an income to the county, which is another additional income for you to utilize when you're doing your budgeting. So what we are curious about is when you're making all these decisions and increasing the tax rates or trying to make it more amenable, that this is additional funds that weren't programmed but are very cleverly able to administer for your use. So our curiosity is, is when, we hope that you're taking this into consideration, because, I mean, whether it's federal or whether it's state or county, anytime you take money early and you invest that money, that money brings back additional revenue, which hopefully, on your responsibility, puts it to our benefit as opposed to the county's. And that's just your common, everyday citizens around the county talk, and I just wanted to present that to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward.
My name's Gene Roden, live on 125 Humont Trail, Hardy, Virginia. Twenty-six years ago, I built my forever home in Franklin County. I was a licensed electrician and worked for six or seven hours, six days a week, eight to 12 hours a day. And my wife of 52 years worked in manufacturing. Together, we made a decent wage. We built a small 1,300 square feet home. Now we both retired, living on a strict fixed income of social security. Now our home will be raised to an absurd amount of 76 percent. Since we're talking about percentages and not real value, how about larger percentage for age of homes? I just replaced my roof for $11,000, and other things also need work. How about larger percentage for homeowners? It's harder to get part-time work to help overcome the higher expenses. I had back fusion, I still not healed. How about higher percentage for homeowners' incomes? My one-month social security presently paid for my yearly realty taxes. Now I add prescriptions, doctors, food, electricity, and it goes on and on. How about a percentage for being a veteran? Lowe's, Home Depot, Advance Auto, give us all 10 percent. I was an assessor for Colley or Trumbull for years, so I know all homes are not equal in terms of square footage, have the same value. Homes with hardwood floors, quartz countertops, tile kitchens, bath floors with tile, and the same value of homes that have rug floors, laminated counters, tops, and linoleum floors in kitchens, bathrooms, same for the outside, bricks, wood, et cetera. The only ones that seem to be happy about this assessment besides is the realtors making a 6% to 8% commission when we have to sell our homes. I paid my dues for being a veteran for our country, and I paid my obligation to my community for paying taxes for 26 years, working hard, and being a good member of the community to make Franklin County the great place to live. Now I am asking 100 percent from you all to be the people we elected and protect the needs of ours.
Sir, sir. Excuse me.
Sir?
Sir. Sorry, I need your last name again.
Gene Roden, Bush, RO D M D, West End.
Thank you.
This gentleman right here was next.
Hey, thanks, guys, for all your service. I was just reading the handout that you had, and not being, oh, I'm Tom Wheeler. I live at 236 Deer Creek Drive in Franklin County. I'm in Ms. Smith's district, I believe. So I was just reading your handout, and I know you're not answering questions, because that's not what you're here for tonight, but I read on here that it says, talking about real estate property tax, that the effective tax rate increase is 9.76 percent. So if it's also true that you can't raise taxes more than 1 percent, you have to equalize the rates in order for that to happen, for me, I would have to suspend reality to believe that this year's budget will be lower by .31 percent. So that doesn't work in my brain, it's basic math. You can't go up 9.7 percent and tell me you're having a tax decrease. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I have a Charles Heard that wanted to speak about the reassessment.
Mr. Heard?
Charles Heard, 606 East Court Street. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My property value increase proposed was over 75 percent this year. So my wife and I exercised our right to inspect and copy the documents used to arrive at our assessed property value. While we were collecting the data, the community, for the community of Rocky Mount, I mentioned to the assessor that we saw no yellow hang tag, and we had not seen an assessor come to our house. And she replied to me that some assessors don't use the hang tag. And if that is the case, then a property owner can be left to wonder if the assessor even came to their home and even conducted the assessment, or if the assessment was done through Google Maps or some type of drone flyover. I believed this to be a little bit problematic. Once we were home, we analyzed the data. At our appeal, the assessment company, which was fairly late in the process, I noticed that of the 59 assessed properties that had a real realized sale value, of the 59 that were on the list, 13 of them were duplicated. These 13 duplicated were the same map number, sale date, selling price. The assessor seemed genuinely surprised that no one else had pointed this out- The assessor seemed genuinely surprised that no one else had pointed this out and wondered aloud if that was true of other grouped communities within Franklin County. The assessment company was apparently using those duplicated figures in their evaluations and calculations. On my analysis, I used both the mean or average and the median to calculate the per square foot value and of the remaining forty-six properties because I had deleted the duplicates. And I arrived at an average of a hundred and fifty-six forty-seven and a mean of one fifty-two fifty-two. Yet our property value was at two oh-five oh-five per square foot, over fifty dollars per square foot higher with no justification and no explanation. Anecdotally, my wife's parents proposed assessed value was two hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot. Now, we don't live in Alexandria or Maryland. We don't have Italian marble and gold fixtures in our home. And to me, this lack of consistency and the lack of attention to detail on the part of the assessment company calls into question their entire results. I implore you to take a close look at how they conducted their assessment and how thoroughly they reviewed their data. Because I'm just a layperson and he offered me a job. He said, "Do you want to come work for us?" And I don't think he was joking because it was laughable when I started pointing out half of our assessed time, he spent making little tick marks at the duplications. I mean, this was ridiculous. And these are the people that, that we hired to do this or that the board hired to do this. And he said, "We keep coming back and they keep hiring us. We must be doing something right." And I know what they're doing right. They're raising our assessed tax values to create more revenue. That's the thing they're doing right.
Ma'am clerk, do you have any one other, any other names?
That's all.
One last opportunity, anybody come forward, ma'am. Come forward. I see a hand back there. You've already been helping.
Yeah, I was wondering if I could get a minute or two since you're now in the open.
Go ahead, do, do, nah, I can't do that. If I do that, I have to let everybody do it. No, sir, you've had your three minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
You're certain about that?
Yes, sir.
Then you're okay with your decision?
Yes, sir. Over here.
My name is Douglas Turner. I reside in Boons Mill, Virginia. I'd just like to ask y'all, how come the public was not more informed about this meeting? This place should be ram packed. But everybody I called, they didn't even know about this meeting. And I think it's a joke that y'all couldn't put it in the newspaper. I called y'all's office in March about, about the meeting. They told me that you're going to have a meeting at eighth, but y'all are going to notify the public, going to either mail something, put out posters or do something, let everybody know about the meeting. We ain't seen nothing. And I think it's a joke. And I appreciate y'all hearing me, but it, it's, this meeting should be adjourned right now and let's, let's, let the public come in and decide this thing. Now, thank you very much.
Anyone else like to come forward and speak? I want to give everybody an opportunity.
My name is Thomas McDevitt. I'm from seventy-one Moonlight Cove, Union Hall, Virginia. You guys had this meeting the same night the school board meeting was at. And I usually attend a school board meeting, but I wasn't going to speak at this one, but I'm going to and I'm going to demand that we all be allowed to get our lodial deeds and we stop paying taxes. Because we, I've been here before and spoke about lodial deeds. I'll hire a lawyer and we'll find out how to file those because your taxes are just getting out of hand now. And, uh, we, it's just, it's got to stop. And we, we're here because we can get to you. We can't get to anybody in Richmond and we can't get to anybody, criminals in Washington, D.C. So we're here, we demand that, that these, that you pay attention to us because it doesn't say anything in the constitution that we work for you, you work for us.
Anyone else? Sir?
Rob Lambert, five forty Highland Lake Road, Union Hall. I had no intentions of speaking tonight. I'm a veteran. I've been in places like Africa, Haiti, and third world countries. I received the assessment in the mail, just like the rest of us here, and I was shocked. There's some folks here that did the math. You do the math. My home was assessed at a ninety percent increase. I haven't done anything to the house over ten years. I expect to pay my taxes like every good American. But what I don't understand is how a house can be assessed at ninety percent over time in one year. And now hearing that other gentleman saying that the assessment company that you hired, and I would hope that you did your homework on this and that these people know what they're doing. Because based on what little I know, the county is probably going to be subject to some lawsuits. I don't think you want to go there. However, again, I didn't come playing for this. I just wanted to be a supporter. I'm asking all nine of you to really take a look at this. Seriously, I know you need taxes like the rest of us, but do it right. If you need to reassess the assessing company, then we need to do it. But ninety percent on my home, I'm on just a lake access home. The gentleman here, there was an electrician, worked his entire life and he's probably on a very fixed income. What you're fixing to do, I don't know what his numbers are, but that's incredible. Reassess the whole situation, reevaluate it, do the right thing. That's what I ask. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else come forward, ma'am?
My name is Melanie Young. My address is four-six-zero Old Faram Road in Faram. This is totally unplanned, but I was just sitting back there making a few notes. Our school board, a couple of years back during COVID, made some decisions that a lot of people were not happy with. A lot of the parents came to the school board meetings, begged and pleaded for the schools to open back up, for students to be able to attend, for students not to have to wear a mask. And the school board, for the most part, was very adamant on not doing the things that the public requested. As a result, a lot of parents took their children out of school. And I am sure that you all are aware of the fact that the funding for our public schools are, is determined by the average daily attendance. And, um, since we had lost so many students, now we are faced with a deficit of funding from, from higher up. And, uh, we're having to close some schools. And the school board is, is sweating to be able to come up with the funds that they need. And as I'm sitting here and listening to some of the other people talk about the increase in the assessed value of their homes and the tax rate decrease, so many people will look, "Oh, we've gone from sixty-nine cents to forty-five cents per hundred." And they'll think, "Oh, okay, we're getting a good deal." But if the, if the value of your property has increased tremendously, then you're going to end up paying more taxes, a lot more taxes in many cases, depending on what the assessed value went up. So I am a realtor and yes, as the property values go up, a realtor can sell property and make more money. But at the same time, there's not going to be a lot of people that can afford to pay the taxes and move it into the community. We have to list, as part of our listing, how much taxes are paid every year for the properties that people look at. So there's a very good possibility that the same thing could happen to Franklin County. I know we're wanting to get more money to make things better in the county, but it may end up, in the long run, having the opposite effect as people are realizing they cannot afford to live in Franklin County anymore. So I just would like to point out that fact, um, for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Before we close the hearing, I want to make sure everybody's had an opportunity to, to do their three minutes. Anyone else? All right, seeing nobody else wishing to speak, then I'm going to close the, uh, public hearing. I want to thank each and every one of you for your attendance and your participation in tonight's hearing. In addition to our monthly meetings and comment periods that we have at each one, during the last four months, the board has held nine meetings or work sessions where the budget was discussed with four public hearings. There was a tax relief for the elderly and disabled hearing proposed for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget hearing, tax levies hearing, and the reassessment hearing this evening. Following these series of budgetary meetings and hearings, which were all advertised in the paper and on the county website, it is from the board now to consider setting the tax rates and adopt a budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. We do not have to adopt a budget tonight and we do not have to actually set the tax rate tonight, but we will by our meeting on the sixteenth. At the conclusion of last Tuesday evening's board discussion, centered around a possible reduction to the proposed real estate tax rate, and the discussions that we've had with staff, uh, I'm opening it up to the floor here to the board. What's your pleasure? What do you want to do? You want to go forward with the tax rates tonight? There with that. Now, keeping in mind what I was telling you while ago, it was brought out a couple of times. We lowered the rate to forty-one cents, which was an equal, uh, equalization. And then it was proposed for the four, four cent tax increase, which was the forty-five cent. Uh, so everything was done that way. Okay, board, what's your pleasure? What do you want to do? Anybody got something they want to say?
Mr. Chairman?
If nobody, I, I don't want to call for the question yet, but I don't want to call for the question yet. I want to make sure that everybody has a clear conscience and everything's off their mind before we call for a question.
I have a comment before we take a vote.
Mr. Taylor?
First off, I want to say thank you for everyone for coming out tonight.
Mr. Taylor?
And also, I want to just say that I couldn't agree more with some of the, uh, comments that were made as far as the assessment goes. Uh, I've, uh, contended for quite some time that I didn't necessarily agree with the way the assessment was carried out because I too am a property owner in the county and I had property that went up by seventy-some percent that, uh, all I did to it was gut it and remodel and I haven't done anything but strip it, so. And it went up by seventy percent. So I, I, I can attest how you feel. And I've argued that we would, might be better served here in Franklin County if we organized and started our own assessment office here in Franklin County to have Franklin County people here that know what our land values are here, setting our assessments for us here instead of contracting with someone not from here. That's my personal feeling. Now with that comes a cost and it would cost more than what we're currently contracting. But I think to get an honest assessment from me, and I'm just speaking for me on this, I'd be willing to pay the extra to get an honest assessment. That's my feeling on the assessments. But that is, takes for future action. As for tonight, we have the assessment that's been given to us that we have to operate with. Another thing, you know, we assess every four years. We're required to by state law, uh, to assess so often. We do it every four years. So for the next three years, four years, we're stuck at this high assessment. So if the property value has dropped tomorrow, we're stuck up here. So I think, you know, another option is some of our localities around us are, are going to every two years or every one year, whatever. And that way they're able to track the market. If the market dips, it dips. If it goes up, and it's a steady market. And I think that's worth those looking into. Uh, you know, like I said, I couldn't agree with, I don't know where the gentleman is, but I, I just want to say I agree with you. I think we need to improve on the way that we do assessments. Uh, you know, I don't have an answer for you tonight, but that's my feeling on it. And, and I think that's something that we'll definitely have to look at. Now, Mr. Chairman, as far as looking at, uh, the tax rates, you know, the gentleman so eloquently said, "The county is suffering. Inflation is terrible. Over the last few years, four years or so, we've seen grocery prices go through the roof. We've seen gas prices skyrocket." And, you know, I couldn't, you're one hundred and ten percent right. Prices, it has gone up. Unfortunately, the county sees those same increases as well. And, uh, we, Mr. Chairman, we've got hit by a pretty heavy increase this year from regional jail of almost seven hundred thousand dollar increase and some other, uh, very costly items that we have to, have to address. But, uh, I just want to say that I agree wholeheartedly that we need to look, take a real hard look at the process that we're currently using. Unfortunately, we're kind of stuck with what we have tonight. But, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's my feeling.
Thank you. Any other member? You know, Mr. Carter, you got something?
Yes, sir. Just a few comments. I'm not going to repeat what all Tim said. I, I was interested, I think Mr. Butler was our first speaker that signed up and had a chart, uh, groceries up twenty-five percent, electricity up fourteen percent. I'm surprised that's not double. When I go to the grocery store, it's absurd. The electric, the electric rates keep going up. I understand all of that. The pain is real for everyone. When we vote on these taxes, you know, we pay it too. It's not just y'all. Every one of us sitting up here pays whatever we vote for. I'm in a little bit unique situation from the other supervisors because I'm responsible for the town of Rocky Mount as well as some constituents outside my district. And I understand the town is going to hold their thirteen cent per hundred tax rate. They're not going to reduce it. So all of my constituents are not only going to get hit with what we do here, but because of the reassessment, they're going to get hit with a bigger tax increase from the town of Rocky Mount. And that's going to temper how I vote on this tax increase. And getting back to, uh, let's see, I believe it was Mr. Shiflett or Mike Smith that gave the, the amount of money that we hold in reserve. Me personally, I think the twenty million dollars that we hold in a bank account drawing interest, which we did use last year to offset a tax increase, I think part of that twenty million dollars should be used to balance the budget this year moving forward. And that's, that's what I'm going to propose when we get to the part of discussing this tax rate. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? I've been sitting here trying to think of, uh, what to say. Everyone on this board sympathizes in our, in, I don't think that none of us are apart at all on where we're at. We've all got our own personal stories of where we stand. My wife and I, we put a, uh, home, uh, house, whole house generator in our house this past year and our assessment went up twenty thousand dollars because of that. And it didn't cost that much to put the generator in. And the, the board doesn't have, the, the assessments are, uh, controlled by what real estate and property is selling for. And that's what the assessors do. As far as, I don't know how many of you have been to all these meetings we've had, the sixty million dollars that we have in the, uh, the fund there, that's four months' operating expenses. If the county, God forbid, went belly up, we could operate on four months off of that. That's your... That's your landfill, your courts, your schools, everything. That's how much that is. So, and it has kept our rating down, our bond ratings down. And it's a difficult... It's a difficult decision that we make that you have elected us to do. And we tried to do that. Everyone up here, you know, we've... It's not something that we take lightly, take it very seriously, believe it or not. And so, with that being said, I'm going to open it up for the question. Now, we can set the tax rates tonight, or we can table it until next Tuesday. But if we don't do it tonight, we've got to do it next Tuesday. We do not have to adopt the budget tonight, but we have to do that next Tuesday because of the constraints and the laws that we're waiting on. I suggest that if you want to do the tax levy tonight, that we do that, but we need to wait till next Tuesday to do the budget because today, the governor made some, a couple of announcements, and we've not gotten all the results back from that unless they have since the meeting that I had with staff at 4:00. And I don't see anybody shaking their head yes. I see heads being shook no. So, with that being said, I'm going to call for the question. If anybody wants to make a proposal. Now, this is what has been proposed. It's not meaning we got to do this. This is what has been proposed. The rate was lowered to 41 cent, which made it level. And then it was proposed that 4 cent be added to it, which made it to 45 cent per 100 assessed value of real estate, public service, corporate property, and mobile homes pursuant to the authority of 58.13200. This is the same that I read off at the very beginning. Setting a tax levy of $2.41 per 100 of assessed value on personal property pursuant to the codes. Setting a tax levy of $1.89 per 100 assessed value on personal property, classified as heavy construction machinery, including but not limited to land movers, bulldozers, front-end loaders, graders, packers, power shovels, cranes, pile drivers, forest harvesting, and civil culture activity equipment and ditch and other types of diggers owned by businesses pursuant to the authority of 58.13508.2 Code of Virginia. Setting a tax levy of 70 cent per 100 assessed value on machinery and tools based on original costs and declining appreciation over a seven-year period. By the seventh year of depreciation, the effective rate of 28 cent per 100 assessed value. This rate is levied pursuant to the 58.1305. And setting a tax levy of $1.08 per 100 of assessed value of merchants' capital pursuant to the authority of 58.10305 Code of Virginia. All right, I'll entertain any type of emotion or discussion that the board may have at this time.
I thought you were going to add a... Speaking for the real estate rate and then for the other levy rates.
I did, sir. I gave everybody plenty of time to talk.
I thought it was going to be done.
It was done to...
Then that closed, then another one.
It was done that way, sir. That's when she called off the second name.
Okay.
Have you got something else that you'd like... Well, no, you've had your three minutes.
It's on two topics, did I have my... So, I can't speak on one topic?
We've already closed the public comment anyway. I gave... I mean, I gave everybody plenty of time. You've got to admit that, did. I asked 40 times if anybody else had anything to say.
Interpretation was that it was real estate.
Ma'am, I gave everybody ample time. I'm sorry.
You may have given this ample time, but you didn't let us realize that it was personal property and real estate. You thought it was just the real estate and property, nothing to do with personal property.
Both of them, I gave everybody ample time. And I read it, what, three times now?
Like you just talked, though, bringing it to the head tonight, you were given some really, excuse me, great ideas from the public. Don't you want to take time to discuss it among yourself to maybe be able to come up with a better idea rather than for tonight on your price? Some people brought up ideas, you know, where extra money could be found or whatever. So, I... That's why I didn't talk, I'm talking now because I didn't know what I was... You're going to bring it to the head tonight. I just thought, a lot of people tonight gave some really great ideas. Maybe you might want to take those.
Ma'am, I told you, ma'am. We've had since January 4 meetings, and we've had nine work sessions and everything here. And we've heard all these talks before, ma'am. We have spent... One night, one night, we was here till 1:00 in the morning.
So, you made up your mind. See you later.
So, that's where it is.
Has your mind been made up?
So...
Before you came in?
Yes, sir, it was.
Sir?
Has your mind, all your minds been made up before you came in?
We're going to wait to see. I'm not arguing with you. It's all over with. It's just that, what do you want to do, board? Is there anyone here want to make a proposal? Or do you want to table it until Tuesday? Anyone here wish to make that? Anyone want to make a proposal on the tax rate? Or do you want to wait until Tuesday?
I'm ready to discuss it tonight if the rest of the board wants to move forward. I'm one person, but if the rest of you all want to discuss it tonight, let's move forward. If not, table it.
I would like to discuss it as well, Mr. Chairman. I think we'd be better to set that tonight and then have our Tuesday meeting to discuss adopting the budget.
I would like to discuss it tonight, and I'd like to hear a proposal from someone. If no one's willing to make a proposal, I don't generally do that, but I'm willing to make one, to make a motion. But I would rather let the board do that as we generally do. I don't want... I do not think we need to adopt a budget tonight because we need to set the tax rates to give staff, if we change it from what it has been proposed. We need to do that. Yes, Mr. Tatum?
I'll make a proposal.
Tony Michael.
Okay. Listening to one gentleman comment earlier that said, that showed that it was roughly an $8 million or so increase, and he recommended that we try to get by with four if we can, so that would cut it in half. So, instead of a four-penny increase, I think that we do two pennies. And if we need to tap into the reserves to further balance the budget, then that's been an option that staff can reach into. As far as the other levies, I... They're not changing. I think they could stay the same. But I think that we need to drop it back to 43 instead of 45 and utilize some reserve funds if necessary.
All right, that's... Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
So, your motion is the 43 cent instead of the 45 on the 100, and that's on the real estate. And all the others stay the same. Other than they closed the school, closed the two schools. So, that was $1 million each. So, that's the two cent there. That gives it back to the public as well. Anyone else want to comment on that? Well, that's the... That's there before I call for the question. Do I have a second?
A second.
We got a second. All right, now, I'll open this for discussion.
I have a question. So, you're talking 43 cents and use money out of the 20 million we have in the bank to balance the budget?
If we need to, yes. If the staff deems it necessary.
Well, for me, I'll just say upfront, I'm not going to vote for that. I'll vote for 42 and then use money out of the 20 million to balance the budget.
All right, are you making a counter motion?
I can.
Or we need to vote on the one?
You vote on it.
We can take it, but we can... But we have to vote on yours first.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment on the second?
Yes.
I appreciate my colleagues' diligence to try to understand how we meet the needs and meet the needs of the taxpayers primarily. We have been told, and our best practices are not to use our reserve monies for operating. We will experience repercussions from that. We just got notification from Fitch last week that they're doing a drill down on Mid-Atlantic municipalities, rural municipalities. And if you all want to, if you do that, you just need to go into it knowing that we're probably going to take a hit on our ability to borrow cheaper money and that the projects that we have in the queue that must be done, we could take a hit on that. And so, I will never support operating this county out of one-time money. That is a cardinal no-no, if you will, for, just simplistically, to do. We have a neighboring locality that did that and got in a lot of trouble because of it. So, I don't support that piece of it. I thank Mr. Tatum for, with regard to your motion at 43. I can support 43 this evening. I find myself at a loss for any of these amounts being acceptable at the end of the day. And I know we have to make a decision. But these assessments, I am totally upset with these assessments and feel truly... I'd like to, you know, I've told the county administrators, I like to throw them out and get rid of that bubble. You know, because the bubble that's driven these high reassessments is that it's a bubble. And it's going to bust, and then we're going to be back where we should be. And so, we're so limited and restricted by what we can and can't do by state code. But that's the degree of concern that I have about these reassessments. They're ridiculous. And so, the tax rate, I think if we were to even equalize the tax rate, there's still going to be tax increases because we had an average of 55 percent. So, there's going to be a tax increase whether we equalize it or move to the 45 cent proposed rate. And so, my personal opinion, and I've studied this up, down, and forward for weeks now. The county, we have some things that absolutely have to be dealt with again, has been kicked down the road for a decade or two. We've got to deal with it, period. We've got to deal with it. We've got new money that's due. We've got over $1 million new money that's required starting July 1st to take care of our CSA, which is your foster care and special day placements. That's $1 million new dollars. We've got $600,000 new dollars now that's required for the jail, regional jail, for the per diem, for the formula for that. And we balanced our budget last year. Someone was talking about that 1.2, you know, million dollars, I believe, in interest income. That's the only way that we balanced our budget last year was with interest income. And that's a scary place for any jurisdiction to be, in my humble opinion. So, this decision is so multifaceted, and it is so... It's so devastating. These reassessments are so devastating to you guys, to the citizens of Franklin County. I'm not sure that there's a silver bullet here at all, quite frankly. We can set a rate, but these reassessments are going to live with all of us for the next four years. And what we've got to do as a board, on your behalf, we've got to, we must to, stand in the gap on your behalf. And we've got to figure out how to get this better, how to get it right as we move into the next reassessment period. And it might not be four years. It could be two years, as our chairman said. So, I just want to... From my own opinion and out of respect to my colleagues, I cannot support using reserve monies to balance a budget with one-time monies. We will pay for that. You will pay for that in the long run. And we need to know better. We need to do better than to take on financial practices that are going to be adverse to this county in the years to come. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, could I follow up to that?
Sure, please.
With all due respect, Ms. Smith, several years ago, I tried to utilize money out of the fund balance. They brought in the financial directors, rode me the ride act. This was so bad, we can't do this, it'll hurt the county. It wasn't six months later till this board tried to utilize some of that money. And I voted no because I said, I can't use it. Y'all aren't using it. I'm not talking about the fund balance. I'm talking about the 20 million taxpayer dollars we hold in the bank drawing interest. That's their money, not ours. And I think we need to utilize this money. It's hard times. People are up against it. Utilize that to get us over this hump and move forward next year. But we've gone, in my short period on this board, from 20 million to 30 million. Now, we got $60 million of their money we're holding. And quite frankly, if we used the $3 million of that, I don't think that's going to affect our bond rating. And if it does, there's not a county in Virginia other than Loudoun that can borrow. And that's where I'm at. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a comment, sir. I don't know where... I've been back and forth for weeks now. And I assure you, I feel all the same pain you all do. I have a young family. I'm buying diapers, daycare, food, the whole shebang, and I feel your pain. I've asked for things for my district, for services for my district that cost money. And as they've said, CSA, when I got elected here, I had no idea the local burden that we have with that. And that's $1 million this year. We have a regional jail along with many other things. I'm kind of torn between Supervisor Carter and Ms. Smith. I'm not for using one-time monies on operational things. If we had to use it for a capital deal, I'm okay with capital, but not for operational. However, I'm with Mr. Carter. If we're going to be at 43, I'm not for using one-time monies. 42, I would to catch up to capital. But I would land at 43 as well to meet in the middle. I understand people are struggling, and I understand that they also expect things out of county and county services. And we have to be able to meet them. So, I'd be at 43.
The last week, I said that I might would go to 44, and that's because I didn't want to cut services. I didn't want to go back to four days a week and our employees lose a day of pay when we just got them to where we're at. That was really concerning to me. But in light of what's going on and the... Taxes are going up too. My wife and I don't fix the income just like everybody else. And that's neither here nor there. That's just the way it is. And it's very perplexing that this is going on. The CSA's gone up. I use the term unfunded mandates. What that is, is stuff or mandates that the state and the federal government says we have to do. There's publication around here, it's over 700 of them. And they say, "We've got to do this, and we've got to do that," and they don't give funds for it. It comes back under unfunded mandates. We have two, at the regional jail, we have two sales closed down because can't get help. And it's pretty good pay there. Can't get help. And this is all over the Commonwealth of Virginia because of the unemployment. And that's where we're at, folks. And all of this, and all these meetings that you were talking about has been brought out to full detail on how that is. And that's where we're at at that. So, I'll support the 43, but I'm not going to support the unfunded, or using the other funds because I don't want it to hurt our bond rating. I have no problem with using that money for capital, but for ongoing expenses, that's not good. And then, like I told you a while ago, the 60 million, a little over 60 million, that's four months' operating. God forbid, we go belly up. We can only operate four months with that. And we've got the bond ratings that we've got. Debt per capita is lower than any other jurisdiction around here. Franklin County is the only jurisdiction around here that's paying more for education that is joining us is Roanoke City. Other than that, it's that. And so, with all that going on, that's where we're at. Mr. Tatum, if you will, will you tell us the motion that you made again?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend my motion if possible.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend my motion by withdrawing the use of the reserve funds for operations in the budget. We'll leave it at 43 cents on 100 as far as the tax rate, but I will remove the use of reserve funds. I do agree with Mr. Carter that that $20 million, we need a plan on what to use it for. If we don't have a plan, we must not need it. If we don't need it, let's refund it back to the people because it's their money. But it's there. It's one-time money. I know we don't like using one-time money for operations. So, I'd say we'll leave it alone as far as the budget. alone as far as the budget goes, and if we need it for a capital expense, then we'll tap into it as needed for capital. But I will remove it from my motion as far as the budget goes.
All right, we have a motion on the table in a second. We'll see what, what happens with that. If that doesn't go, then we'll come back to Mr. Carter. Madam Clerk, we have a motion in a second. Do a roll call vote, please. This is for the forty-three cent on the raising the taxes to forty-three cent from the proposed forty-five and everything else that I read three times standing the same.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
No.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
No.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. That passed, what was it, five-two? Five-two? All right. So, the new tax rates have been set at forty-three cents for personal property or real estate, and then the others, as I had read them. I'm gonna ask for a ten-minute break, stretch your legs and come back, and then we'll decide where we're gonna go from there.
All right, now that the tax levies have been adopted and you do not have to adopt the budget, because I think that staff needs some time until next week to work on this. We may have some thoughts. I'm gonna have staff, Whitlow, you, Stag, Ryan, do you have any comment or anything that you'd like to add or say into what we just talked about? I think we need to, all right, y'all might wanted to adopt the budget tonight. Everybody shaking their head. You got any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As I mentioned earlier today, the governor has now submitted his amended budget, and of course, as the saying is, the devil's in the details of what that, what that will be. The, the Senate, of course, the governor's original budget, yeah, as proposed, the state senate and the state House of Delegates did an amended compromise budget several weeks back, and the General Assembly, as scheduled now, will reconvene on April the seventeenth. In the meantime, the governor's made some modifications today specifically with, with education and some other areas in the state budget. And so, staff will, we will be scrubbing that, trying to find more information this week, what that may look like and the impacts on the school system and so forth. We just don't have that level of detail today, but we'll, we'll be following up on that. And I will say earlier, you know, I know there was some board discussion regarding the budget, and, you know, now that those tax rates and levies have been adopted, in terms of modifying the budget and looking at the budget, we can look at several things, and staff will go back, will look at our capital. I, I heard that this evening to, to go back and look at capital. As mentioned in the audience, you know, I know there was various suggestions and, and things made here tonight from board members as well. And I think Davenport and company, our financial advisors, would state, I think it's already been stated by the board, capital is typically one-time expenses and not necessarily ongoing operational expenses. And so, looking at the budget for some of those capital needs, we will go back specifically, knowing that and looking at that in mind, that may be a first priority that, that we look at. Certainly, we always keep an eye on our year-end fund balance, year-end carryover from the previous year. So, that's typically used for capital expenditures. So, we'll, we're gonna take a hard look at staff, at the capital budget. We'll also look at operational budget. I know there's a couple of items that we can look at operationally that, that we can go to as well, looking up to make up that difference, and, and we'll have some further thoughts, I'm sure, next Tuesday, if that's the board's pleasure.
Ryan, you got anything to add? I'd like to put you on the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate that. No, I don't think anything else to add. I think this, this gives staff the guidelines on what the available funding will be, and so we'll, we'll look back on where possibly cuts could be made, reductions to the original proposed. As Mr. Whitlow said, certainly look at capital because it is a better use of one-time money and bring back some proposals for the board.
Mr. Carter, I had a gentleman question me, the, the twenty million we have in the bank, what's the interest rate on that, and what did we draw on that last year?
The, those funds are invested in the local government investment pool that the state treasury runs. Right now, I don't know the latest rate, it was somewhere around five and a quarter, five and a half percent. And so, right now, those funds are being earned on the twenty million. They could be, right, they were used to balance the operating budget this year, but we had a planning rate of four percent. So, with five percent and above, we expect we'll earn more than that was planned in the budget. So, back to Mr. Whitlow's point, with year-end surplus carryover, a lot of those items are what we would look at with one time to be able to fund. So, and with our guess for next year, we don't know when, we anticipate the Federal Reserve will start to drop interest rates, so we planned about a three and a half percent rate annualized. So, it just depends on how fast the Federal Reserve drops those rates as to whether we meet budget next fiscal year as was planned. But, but the twenty million specifically is in LGIP, and it's about five and a quarter to five and a half percent right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
A point of clarification, Mr. Whitlow and Mr. Carter.
Yes, go ahead.
The proposed budget that were you all proposed at forty-five cents, is my recollection correct that generally speaking, you were speaking of three cents for capital and one cent for operating? Was that the general parameter for that increase?
Yeah, when, yes, ma'am, when you combine the school capital as well, if you remember, we proposed school capital as well, roughly, that was going to be about what that broke out to, yes, ma'am?
Because, you know, I, I really, I understand, Mr. Carter, I understand your point about the capital. You know, part of this, you know, this setting of this rate is going to take some pressure off of capital, but it's not certainly gonna take care of the total need. And so, that twenty million dollars, as we have all been, you know, kind of instructed and, and given advice by Davenport, one-time monies for generational-type projects is how it was phrased to us, if you recall, a generational project, and I would use as an example, something like the Career and Technical Education Center, the nine-one-one center, things that we could make an investment in on behalf of the taxpayers without putting further pressure on the tax rate. So, I think we're gonna have an opportunity, given where we are, to maximize, Mr. Carter, I think, our ability to plan. I mean, we, this board has really, we've not sat around and really strategized about how we wanna spend what money on what capital projects other than what's been in the spreadsheet. So, I think we have an opportunity to step into that. It's a nice place to be with regard to not being able to say we can't do anything at all, that we can't buy a fire truck, you know, et cetera, et cetera. We can't take care of the nine-one-one center and the landfill. But I think that we've got to, your point is well taken. I don't, I don't want you to leave here tonight thinking I don't understand that.
Oh, no, I, listen, I don't work for Davenport, I work for the citizens of this county.
We all do.
And I'm sorry, we've talked about this twenty million dollars back and forth, what are we gonna do with it? And we've closed two schools, and I can tell this board right now, if you think I'm voting to build a million, an eighty million dollar brand-new school, that ain't gonna happen. We're gonna have to utilize the Katzie Center or some building we already have. So, I'm not interested in borrowing eighty million dollars. That's why I think we need to utilize this twenty million to help the citizens and help the county moving forward. And I don't care what Davenport says about those bond ratings, we're holding what we need to in that other account to keep our bond rating up. Yeah, that looks nice, hey, we got extra twenty million dollars over here. Me personally, I'd like to say that too, but you know, I have to live in the meantime, and the citizens have to live too.
Well, and I understand that, I, I truly do. And Mr. Thompson's point about, you know, needing to reserve three years of operating expenses should the bottom fall out.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, if the bottom falls out, we're gonna be in that ship with a lot of other people, so.
Well, that's right.
I'm not too concerned about that.
But, Mike, I just want you to know, I understand, we all know what that twenty million dollars is setting there to do, and we have not had those discussions yet. We have not made a determination about those generational projects, if we were to use that money for a generational project. Those decisions have not been made, and it is the taxpayers' money, and we work for the taxpayers, and I will never disagree with you on that, never. We've got to be prudent, and we've got to be fiscally responsible with the money that we have. And that's what I'm striving to do, and to do it thoroughly, cost efficiently, and very thoughtfully as we move into the future.
Well, all that sounds great, but that doesn't help John Smith out here who can't pay his electric bill.
Mike, I understand.
Can't pay his medical bill.
You know I understand that, Mike.
Well, I understand these capital projects too, but my priority is for the citizens right now. I'm not too worried about some of these long-term capital projects we've got hanging out here in the wings.
Well, if you band-aided this year, you gotta have.
We've been band-aiding this stuff ever since I've been on this board, and now we're sitting on sixty million dollars and we're still band-aiding stuff.
Hey, anyone else? All right, I think we'll, we're in good shape here until next Tuesday. If you got discussion about any particular cuts, you can contact staff. We will have time in our next Tuesday meeting to discuss this at length and go further with it. I'd like to thank Mr. Smith for being here. Jim has, I don't know if you all noticed, but he's gotten younger and lost a lot of weight, but you tell Jim I said that, okay?
Tell him you're invited back.
Got more hair too.
Better hair too.
Got better hair too. So, anyway, with that, so we will adjourn our meeting until next Tuesday, the sixteenth, at three o'clock. Thank you all for staying with us.